Good morning. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our committee, the whole meeting dated Monday, December first, two thousand and twenty five at six P M. We have a full house tonight with Mayor Burrow online, as well as councillor Downey Oosterhoff, Renault, Smith, and Brayton, as well as myself, councillor Eady. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Renault and Brayton, all those in favor? Right, and the adoption of the agenda, can I get a mover and a seconder for that as well, please? Councillor Oosterhoff and councillor Smith, and all those in favor for that? All right, perfect. Moving along to delegations, uh, four point one. Oh.
You need to ask if there's any disclosures.
Oh, disclosures of interest, sorry. I went too fast. Is there any? No, bro. Well, we're good for that. Okay, sorry. Four point one for delegations, Alto High Speed Rail project. We have Alexis Doyle, manager of community relations Ontario here. Now you're ready.
Thank you. It's not often I have like a full house.
They all came for you.
And they're so excited. I'm excited to hear what comes out. Uh, but yeah, we still have more people to speak to if you're getting an update on the project. Uh, thanks again for for having us and inviting us and making time for our delegation in tonight's agenda, which is evidently busy. Uh, my name is Alexis Doyle, I'm the manager of community relations here at Alto, responsible for a team that does engagement with municipal uh representatives, the public and stakeholders across Ontario, one of which has joined me today, Jennifer Faulkner. She is based in the Ottawa region and I'm joining you uh over from Peterborough. So next, oh, okay.
You look good, don't you?
Okay, I want to take a moment to zero and all the specific challenges that this project aims to address. So Alto's high-speed rail project will help to improve productivity throughout the Ontario or the Toronto Quebec City corridor, which is where we're proposing the passenger rail project to be uh through. And just to begin, I just want to highlight that Alto is a crown corporation, a federal crown corporation. And so the high-speed rail project will help to improve productivity throughout that corridor and surrounding areas, addressing uh the challenges with increased travel costs, be it through higher fuel or car maintenance, uh and even infrastructure maintenance with the increased wear and tear on our on our infrastructure and and highways. Elevated congestion on the major highways are is an issue and in airports. And uh it'll also bring disconnected communities closer together through a convenient mode of transportation that reduces greenhouse gas emissions and improves one's quality of life through enhanced passenger experience. Next slide. The seven station areas along the corridor include Toronto, Peterborough, Ottawa, Laval, Montreal, Trois-Rivières and Quebec City. Now, we do not have a an alignment yet, which is why you only see the station areas here on this map. But in the coming months, we will share corridor concept within which the alignment will be located. And we will refine down to the specific route using technical analysis that considers safety, design, the environment and social considerations. Slide. The project will run on a thousand kilometers of dedicated electrified track. Our service will be fast, reliable and frequent, reaching speeds of over three hundred kilometers an hour. We will reduce travel times throughout the Toronto city to Quebec City corridor. Given specific design requirements for this technology, we will need new trap dedicated to moving people only, which has its benefit of increased liability to ensure trains arrive on on time and bring you where you need to go when you expect it.
Can I interrupt you for a moment?
Certainly.
The mayor has his hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor Burrow.
Uh, thank you, uh through you, uh Madam Chair, actually to our deputy clerk. Uh, what I'm seeing remotely on the screen is actually the file manager, so I'm not sure if the sharing of the screen is perhaps focused on the wrong window. I'm not actually seeing the presentation.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'm just fixing it now.
Great, thanks.
Are you seeing the correct one now?
That's perfect. Thanks very much.
In addition to the fast and unreliable considerations, uh the frequency is also a target. Uh, where we'll where where we will aim to have twenty to thirty trains daily. And that would enable convenient options that accommodate for a flexible travel schedule. So to give you a sense of some of the times on the next slide, of how we will get from one station area to the other, uh from downtown Toronto to downtown Montreal, we're targeting about three hours and those in the Peterborough and surrounding areas, a commute of of forty minutes, but you can see Ottawa and Montreal on the screen there in about an hour, which is half the time that it currently takes today. And there are several other positive project outcomes, including safer travels between these cities, meaningful contribution between toward reconciliation with indigenous peoples with whom Alto has been engaging for several years and building those relationships, and increased availability of accessible and affordable services. A new system of pass, uh a new system for passengers will open up possibilities for work, entertainment, activities and learning. From an economic perspective, the stretch along the southern, uh the stretch along Southern Ontario into Quebec is already a hub of economic and social activity. The high-speed rail is projected to increase Canada's G D P by one point one percent, which is equivalent to twenty-four to thirty-five billion dollars annually. And that's achieved through increased productivity, with cities being brought closer together, higher participation in the workforce and increased tourism as well. The project will also strengthen Canadian the Canadian economy by sourcing goods and services right here. We will need substantial volumes of steel, aluminum, concrete, copper and aggregate, and we'll need the people to build it, produce it, produce it and deliver it. Significant economic activity will be generated during construction with the creation of over fifty thousand jobs. The project is currently in the development phase, which includes route design, station location planning and environmental studies. In partnership with Cadence, that our project partner, the team is assessing the corridor's infrastructure needs with designs that will withstand our extreme weather and work toward ensuring integration with existing and future transit networks. Over the next few years, we will refine the corridor, as I mentioned before, looking at the station areas on the map, will identify the preferred alignment, select those station locations more specifically, and complete the regulatory process, and will also acquire the land and finalize the engineering design. So lots to accomplish in a four-year process. And at the end of the development, Alto and Cadence will present a cost and timeline of a shovel-ready project for federal approval. So as I mentioned, Alto is not working alone. In two thousand and twenty-three, Transport Canada launched Alto's rigorous R F P process to identify our project partner. This process was closed in February of this year, when then Prime Minister Trudeau announced that Alto would work with Cadence, a consortium of rail infrastructure companies based in Canada and in France, with expertise delivering transportation in and high-speed rail projects on a global scale. Now, the team has begun pre-consultations with many communities to ensure that the project reflects the local needs and the priorities. And this approach is about more than just consultation, it's about working together and building that trust. Now, we are very aware that not all communities see themselves in this project, especially those who are not within close proximity to one of the station area locations. Recognizing this, Alto is in the initial stages of creating a community benefits plan that will create sustained measurable benefits for impacted communities along the project alignment. The early vision for this program includes a focus on economic opportunities through the employment procurement of local businesses. And I want to share our plans for the coming months, where also when also uh when Alto will launch a comprehensive engagement process. We will offer several open houses, virtual information sessions and launch an online platform that will focus on educating the public on high-speed rail and give participants an opportunity to share insights that will help inform the project decision-making process. As the dates are confirmed, we will reach out uh to cities, to the municipal staff to share dates and make sure that everyone in the public knows when they can attend one of our open houses or virtual sessions. And finally, underpinning our engagement here at Alto, our principles that ensure we are open, transparent, and that we reflect the local needs across the corridor. Through respective, through respectful communications with an inclusive and collaborative approach. Our early engagement during the development phase will give the public and stakeholders the opportunity to learn and contribute early on before the preferred alignment is determined. I want to close out by thanking council, mayor and council and staff for having us today and welcome to or happy to answer any questions.
Councilor. Would there be any north-south coming down to it to like so north of Peterborough or something or north of Ottawa to get them on to that?
In terms of other rail services beyond the one that we've proposed? So the station locations are exclusively the seven stops that we've highlighted, but it can become a backbone of transportation that can enable more local transit, be it through bus services or otherwise. Um, and so that integration is either, in some cases, somewhat existent. In the case of Peterborough, the city offers all sorts of transit, local transit. Um, in other cases, it would be possibly new services that would come after the project would be developed and designed.
So um do you intend or does Alto intend to use the tracks that go through our township uh at the moment? And then swing up to Ottawa? Is that how that?
Excellent question. Uh, the technology for high-speed rail is not competitive compatible with conventional rail. And so we are generally looking at greenfield track. Um, the turn radius for a high-speed rail track is about seven kilometers, so you have to go fairly straight. Not only because of that challenge, but also to reach the speeds um that we're looking looking to do, which is over three hundred kilometers an hour. So using existing corridors would um be challenging because it wouldn't allow us to achieve the efficiencies and the time savings. Uh, and then the technology itself is a totally different track than the classes we have uh today for for freight and other passenger.
So it's a completely new line and a completely new location?
Most of the, most of the way. In some cases, there would be corridors that we might be able to um use, but we expect mostly greenfields.
Do you plan on coming through our township?
We do not yet know how we're going to get from one station area to the other, but in the coming months, we'll share those corridor concepts. So a map with an overlay of of areas between each of those station air, station locations, so Toronto or to Peterborough to Ottawa. Um, and within those corridor concepts, we would be looking to place that alignment.
Thank you.
One more question, guys. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, also.
Yeah.
Just move along here to four point two, conditions of the sixth concession with Carl Walker and Chris, I'm sorry, I don't know how to ask your last names. Scotty, Scotty?
So I'm just making sure I'm doing this right, so.
Sure.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. Um, we're here uh from the sixth concession, if you can read that sign. I think the sign does a good job in explaining very quickly in a picture that we we feel neglected. We're angry and we're upset. The road has not been maintained properly for both the last four or five years. My wife and I have lived on the road for uh over twenty years and the maintenance has been good up until recently. These pictures weren't taken with anything particular in mind, other than a couple recently because I knew I was coming to do a presentation. These are just random shots that we've been taking as as it gets worse. So I'll just sort of start, uh drive according to Rokene, that's a new sign. I found that particularly irksome because what it said to me was, hey, yeah, we can't take care of this road, so just be careful. Um, there's a sign of what the road entrance is from the farmers there, a picture, sorry. Um, that will come up later, but the farmers are dragging the mud onto the road, which is causing us issues. We can't leave town or leave our house and go driving to town without getting our license plate completely covered every time, pretty much. Um, I think that big picture doesn't speak for itself. That's not atypical. That's the way that road is. From white road from one end to the other. Um, that other picture there, that one's in front of my house. There's just randomly, those potholes don't go away. They come by, they degrade the road. Twenty-four hours later, I believe on one of those slides, I actually have the pictures. They're still there. Um, then over behind Mayor Burrow there, sorry, there's a couple of photos there. That's what we call Mud Fest twenty twenty-four. I don't know. Is council familiar with that? So they dragged all the mud onto our road off of the sides of the road. It was a ballistic, that deep. Uh, post office was extremely upset. They were threatening to stop delivering our mail. That happened in two thousand and twenty-four. It's just got to get better. I can go to the next slide now. Okay, are you all quiet? Carl's gonna, he's a much more technical person when it comes to roads. He spent his career in civil and civil and roads, so he knows what he's talking about when it comes to roads. He's got some ideas and some questions.
Good evening, the mayor, councillors and concerned residents. Uh, the residents of the sixth road are here to speak with the committee of the whole and specifically sixth concession road from the Dublin to County Road six. Council completed a report, F twenty-one oh four, or paving of the north side of those sticks. Motion was carried with five to two vote. They only had funding, paid one section, little sixth. Problem with our road is an asphalt road would extend the funding to complete our section list six. And it would not be budgeted any time in the foreseeable future if you pave it. Therefore, asphalt paving is a nonstarter for our section of the road. The township in some of its reports have stated the heavily traveled road somewhat unexpected given its gravel nature and the condition of it. The annual average daily traffic for this road back in July and August of twenty-three showed was four hundred and ten vehicles. That's true, probably. The town has a hundred and, I believe it's eighty-eight point five five kilometers of road where the Rosie study stated that it was only a fifty-car capacity per road. We're at four hundred and ten. Our road is used for a lot of hauling gravel from this whole area. Or is adjacent to this road and is utilized countless times. The sixth concession road from County Road six and Dublin Road and the County Road twenty-nine is utilized as a bypass for Brockville in both directions. The traffic is extreme. Who's going to drive through Brockville when they have a road if it's in good condition and they use it regardless? Council completed a funding requirements, A twenty-four thirty-eight. It's the condition maintenance and the future of the sixth concession road. And the report was twenty-four oh five twenty-one, so it's May twenty-first twenty-four. The residents of the sixth concession would like the committee of the whole to address the amount of funding that's been allocated so far and a future allotments in any timeframe when a tar and gravel road can be completed for us. We're going to leave this with you because we're we're pretty much at arms as far as our road condition, not been good, to say the least. The last two years has been horrendous. And I'm not sure if it's a timing issue or what it is, but it's got to get better. And I'd like to see some funding put away in increments for our road because tar and gravel roads will stand up far better than any asphalt road, especially this farming code. If anybody has any questions concerned, appreciate the time. And like seeing and explaining both the funding process and any of the allotments so far.
Does council have any questions? Councilor.
Uh, I I found it interesting about the GPS uh coordinates that. So you think that when somebody plugs in uh the Walmart or or some some area in Brockville that they route them through County or the sixth concession?
They do. And if you if you're a driver at all, you'll know that's not the route to go into town if you're going to take County Road. Because you're right through town again, unless you're taking the four oh one. That's no reason you're going that way.
So you're seeing a lot more traffic than what lives on the road?
Yes, constant, considerably. And you can canvass any of the residents that live there, they'll explain the same thing. I guess it's just gotten to the point now, uh with the maintenance and upkeep, I don't think it's adequate given the number of vehicles on the road. There's a lot of delivery drivers. An exponential, given what uh the amount of deliveries up and down our road. In fact, they don't want to go to Brockville either. And the fact that the dump trucks come up and down our road, dude. It's not made to that. And it's not maintained proper enough or inadequately enough for them to drive this road. So I'd just like to see council try to put some money in the vein. So when you can get to the point of having a fine gravel. Don't any of them. There's lots of avenues out there. And another issue I have is with the all of the entrances along the six. They have to be, and this is paramount, they have to be level. They can't be lower than the road. Otherwise, all they're doing is dragging the sand, the silk and all the debris onto the road. The grader turns it over. The next thing you know, we have a road that's sloped. I had a jar full of the road, dried it with the grader, silt and it's clay. And that's why our road is, is just a slop mess. And you know, I've seen people driving down the road that they start to slide off the road due to that. And all it is is a grader is turning this sand and silk and clay over into the road. And we're at an issue now where we can't wait any longer to get something done for our road. It's been years. We've got residents here, been here for forty years. Nothing has happened. The maintenance on has gotten worse. We're not trying to give anybody a hard time, but we need some action. We need the council to take some serious action and address the concerns of the funding. This is, I'm not sure how long it will take you to get the money together, but it's something that has to be addressed. And you have a condition report out a year ago. Now we're in a year and a half and I'm not sure if any funding has been cleared up or not.
Mayor Burrow has a question.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and and uh thanks to the the residents for the presentation. Um, because of the camera angle, I'm not quite sure whether, do we have um or any public work staff uh available in the chambers at the moment?
We do.
Okay, so then uh through you, Madam Chair, I have a just a quick question for our our public works manager. My understanding is that there are sort of at least rule of thumb thresholds uh that we can turn to in in terms of traffic counts. And when that tends to start triggering the thought process around uh upgrading the uh the type of surface or the construction of the of the road, so uh can you can you confirm that I'm I'm generally uh on the right track in in my understanding of that? And if I am, uh what what would the trigger threshold typically be for considering something like surface treatment uh on, you know, upgrading a gravel gravel road to uh to surface treatment? And I may have a follow-up question. Thanks. Oh, sorry, is is that any better?
No. Can you turn it up?
I've turned it up and I've changed the microphone and it's not changing.
You're talking for a threshold amount of traffic going to tar and gravel. I don't know if the answer I've popped my head right now, I'm definitely going to back to you, but.
Okay, that that's fair enough. Um, hopefully somebody can understand me well enough. Uh, I I would like to suggest that at the very least, this uh deserves uh some kind of uh future follow-up. So I think we need to refer this to staff to come back to us uh with with the report. In that report, I would like to see a a cost comparison of in the long term. Uh, if we were to be providing a decent level of service on this gravel road so that it didn't have the potholes that are that are shown, what that would cost versus what it would cost to uh to surface treat it? Uh, because I think that may help us make a a decision on on how to move forward. So I would like to suggest that we refer this to staff and we definitely don't allow this to just fall off the edge of the table. Thanks. So I would like to suggest that we refer this to staff and we definitely don't allow this to just fall off the edge of the table, thanks.
I I still think there's an issue here that you've already allocated. In twenty-four to look into funding. For our section of the road. So if anything's fallen off the table, it's gotta be that. We need to find out some answers on that, on some funding. We have the traffic volume on our road, the maintenance is not there. And we need the council to look into. To allocate funding. This is, this is a longevity issue. This road will maintain with a turn gravel longer than any other. Due to the volume of traffic that's on this road and it's only gonna increase. Well, I just think that the funding, by putting away some funding. This could be a two-year project. And just give us some heart and look into it because right now we are really at odds with what the condition is. Today's a good day. It got graded and then it froze, but that's not viable for the year. We just don't want somebody to flip a coin and go, here's today's report, tomorrow. We'll see in three weeks, and that's what we've been getting, it's just not good enough for our road. The traffic, the trucks, it just didn't hold up with the amount of clay and silt in. Don't we give anybody a hard time, we need some action to have. Now you guys have already looked into it, or the council. We need somebody to put some funding up, to make something move in the right direction. Is this, this is an issue that's gonna go away, we need to have some funding allocated. Got a good road base, but. Majority of the work can be completed by in-house regarding the culverts. And then there's a small amount of ditching to do. Some of the farmers with the big operations on this road, they need culverting. Because they're the worst contributor to this. They need to stop dragging out clay with silk from the. Fields onto the road because that's our problem right now. Well, I hope that everybody looks into this and makes some improvements and allocates funding. Because that's the only way to stop the problem.
Go ahead, council.
Thank you, through you to. Delegation. It's all about the money. For all over the township.
Of course it is.
And your road is no different than any other road.
No.
And this, this year was a. A really bad year with all the rain. And. I don't know your road, I know it's right on the rock, the the flat rock right under, under. At the south end, yes, most of our roads are urgent the same way. And we've had a problem. More than just this fall, all summer, we've had problems. And the big, biggest problem is it's finding enough money to fix all these roads. And. I don't know. I can, I can point fingers same as you can, but that's not solving the problem. The problem is. That we have too many roads that. That are the same condition as yours. And for us to fix every road. And a lot of, a lot of our roads has more, more traffic count than yours does. And to to get to them.
Excuse me, sir, our our road has nine times more traffic than we have in front of.
No, 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 not, 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 no, I don't agree with you.
It's your study, you don't agree with you.
The road scene study stated, you have a hundred and eighty-eight kilometers of less than fifty per an A A D.
Well, we have a lot of busy roads, let's put it that way, but the stats don't lie.
The road scene studies, uh, I've done road scene studies, I've read yours and I know the facts on.
Anyway. But we've, we've. We used to get, we used to get, uh, the problem is, we used to get money. From uh the provincial government. We used to, we had, we did Galloway Road over and I think it was at that time with ninety cent dollars. And we spent ten cents and the province give us, give us uh ninety cents, we don't get that anymore. So like it's taxes, we can pave every road in this township if we can put the taxes up that you can't afford.
Every municipality is in the same boat.
Exactly.
But they're not, they're not dealing with what we are, but as far as our road condition and the amount of traffic that's on our road and the heavy trucks on our road. And this is a fact, it's a given fact.
No.
And the point is, is the council already said they were gonna allocate funding for this section of the road in your study in twenty-four. So maybe somebody oughta, if you're gonna put it up there. Get the money up, start the process, put some money away. I know there's a need, there's a need in every municipality. And this government we have in the province now isn't doing anybody any favors because they're too busy blowing money.
Well, we have a new money man there now, so maybe he'll.
Uh, I'm not gonna be sure, maybe he'll find us something. We're gonna be in the same boat because the same people are in in Toronto. Exactly, we have the same people here and I don't understand why people vote for them.
I don't either.
But I know I break them, vote for them and never will because they don't do anything.
Well, we gotta have money to spend too.
Yes, we do, but we, again, you put an allocation down to. You're in your. For this road, but now, now it's time to put up and put some money away.
Yeah.
I know you have funding and know it's, your mark for other places, but this is one of those roads where you just, you put a study, what's the point doing a study if you're not gonna put the funding up when you say you're gonna? We all need to be transparent, we need to be upfront and we need to put our money where the mouth is and you guys have already said you put some money up. So I was gonna leave it with you, hopefully you guys will be good for your work. Otherwise, what's the point? We waste our time coming here.
Well, we had, uh, you just, that's not an excuse.
Please stop.
This is not an excuse, but we, we had a lot of bridges this year to. That we had to replace, way more than I figured on.
I've worked on bridges, I know, but also, yeah, I'm just trying to get our road, trying to get you to allocate funding, that's all.
Yep.
Like your report says, I'll try and allocate some funding. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much for your presentation, our staff, I've watched frantically all writings, so I'm sure we'll be seeing that very soon on the next reports. Um, now, council.
I have one question for you.
Sure.
Director of Public Works.
Okay.
So in regards to the slide presentation that did show a photo of a sign that said drive and coordinate road conditions. What were these signs put up?
Madam Chair, through you to councillor Smith and council as a whole, the guys started putting the signs up about two weeks ago. They put approximately sixty-five of them up.
And can I follow up for the reason of?
Uh, Madam Chair, through you and councillor Smith and councils as a whole, these are uh half-load signs. So traditionally, the way the township has done it, they go out every year and put up half-load signs. So it takes approximately six days. Four guys, six day, two trucks to go around and put the half-load signs up. So we purchased these signs, it was approved in the capital budget, or yeah, oh, sorry, the operating budget for twenty twenty-five. To put these signs up and for, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars. And now what, they've got a, a nut on them, so when they open up their hinge and then the half-load signs behind it.
Is the drive for the condition of the road, is that a winter sign? That's a sign to, like, I see that in a lot of municipalities, you see it on the high, on the four oh one. To drive for the condition of the road and it's usually for the winter. When the road is icy or snow-covered or whatever, not necessarily the general. Road condition, but.
Madam Chair, through you, councillor, councillor and council as a whole, the intent is yes for the winter, however, it does. Cover all road conditions, so if there's trees down or. Whatever's the general sign.
Does uh concessions, concessions six have a speed limit posted? What is that?
Sixty. That's not adhered to.
That's kind of odd, like, how long has it been sixty? I'm just asking.
Uh, about the same amount of time the road problem started ironically. Uh, about four or five years ago, we petitioned council to reduce the speed because of the speeders. And the road was in great condition and you changed it to sixty, it all slowed down and so did the road maintenance. Now you can't do sixty.
Anyone else? I move four point three Rito Lakes ATV club, Mr. Josh Hex.
Take that question in the background.
What question do you have?
Thank you, I'm not sure if we're allowed to speak, um, James Bloom, um.
Ding, what address was?
Uh, sixty-five, sixty-two, Sixth Concession Road. Also sixes and that, um, I just wanna stipulate, when the um. Traffic count was put at the end of the road in twenty twenty-four. Um, and the cho- choose, chose to pave the east side of the sixth concession. Um, I'm not sure that they stopped the people going over the counters on the east end of the six. Because Augusta Township residents use that road to get onto County Road six to go into Brockville. So the way I looked at it was that my tax dollars paid for Augusta residents to have a nice paved road to commute. So our road, which is um heavily built up now with a lot of uh high-end homes. I think the assessment down that road, if you, if you garner the amount of assessment that is down on that road. And how many taxes are paid on that short section of the road, I think that we warrant a little better look at that, thank you.
Now, can we do? Okay, one more.
Six five four one, Sixth Concession Road. I lived on the road forty-six years. It was not a good road when we moved there, it improved, but it was really deteriorated in the last few years. Uh, Carl, uh, you mentioned about tax dollars. Well, we spend a lot of money on front-end parts on our cars. You can't drive, the speed limit on the road is sixty, most of the time I'm driving forty. And in dodging potholes and and changing front-end parts on the car and wheel bearings.
Yep.
It's expensive to live on that road. Because the road needs to be better maintained. Another thing. The, the clay and silk in the road, and you treat the road in the spring once for dust. And then we have to. Uh, bear with potholes all summer long, because you, if you grade it, you're gonna get more dust. Our houses are dirty from the dust and in fact. Just a few days ago, when it was graded and it dried a bit. You could hardly hit, see the car in front of you from the dust, dangerous. There are five companies with dump trucks running up and down our road. Because there's sand bits and gravel bits, we're just north of the Woods Quarry. And the sand bits down on the east side. Um, there's a lot of traffic, if you put it, your cords out to do a traffic study for one day. You might hit a light day, but if you leave it a week or two weeks. And get them when uh they're running up and down the road, the trucks, you'll get a big count. So you can't just go by the number of counts for one day as to whether the road needs fixing or not. That's all I can think of right now.
Okay, last one.
I sort of know whether or not the council is gonna move upon their twenty-four report, allocating funding for the six.
There's gonna be a report coming up, sir, we can't make any decisions this evening, unfortunately, that's just not how it works.
It's a decision how you, you've already made to look into it.
Exactly, and we're gonna have a report coming back and see why we haven't been, so it's coming up.
We're into a year and a half.
All right, four point three, Rito Lakes ATV Club, Mr. Josh Hips, the vice president, you have a floor.
I mean, this is my first time, so bear with me here, um. So I'm here to propose a, a new route heading from uh. Our existing trail over to another club's existing trail, like, we'll travel through. Um, a portion of your township here and. We end up using that portion on a special route um this past weekend as a route, as a ride. And uh ended up working us really well, so we're looking to see if we can include this into our current bylaws. Um, for what trails we do per, have already, so um with this. Um. Session here, you'll see the current route that we're looking to use. And then it highlights every road that we have in here, there is two sections of. Uh, portions that are uh leading Granville, the county parts, parts of it. Um, we would have to go to them to get authorization from them to use there as well, but uh. Right now, I'm just looking to see if I can get a township's approval to use this as a, a route going forward.
All right, okay, you have a question already?
I do, yeah, it's okay, thank you. Is our road good enough for Snowmobile Trail? For a snowmobile trail, like on the road? Yeah. I wouldn't ride a snowmobile on the road, no. Oh. Um, just because of, uh, ATV and a snowmobile are like, ones who are using tires, who are using skis and stuff. So if you put a snowmobile on the road itself, um.
Or an ATV, is it good enough for ATVs?
Oh, yeah, no, perfect for that.
Their vehicle.
Not these, and this routing here, these are all um dirt roads and and we try to use. Whenever I try to propose a route through an area that um I don't quite have enough landowners. I have to use a certain route, like roadways that uh. Don't impact a whole lot of the main routes, I try to keep it off of any main roads so that you don't uh. You don't have any traffic issues or anything like that, it's like a road that might see ten cars a day, you'd see. You know, four ATVs go through or something like that, so it's very less impactful and. So um. With this is also, this is the list of the roads here, you'll see. Um, this is going to be uh hopefully adding more uh. Where they call uh, trying to think. Tourism dollars to the area, so what this will do is this will open up the bottom end or south end of our trail system. So we can, what they call a loop. And uh people can ride from, let's say, Toledo, they'll ride over North Augusta up to Merrickville, down Smith Falls and back around. So we can um as a club and as a federation, we can promote these loops. And more riders will come to the area, spend money in the area, like in the Toledo gas station or in North Augusta down at the. They wanna stop for a pop or uh something like that or food along the way, they can uh. Go down to that section and travel through the area, so. But yeah, it's, it's worked really well, uh especially last weekend, uh the routing was, was great, used some open concessions. That used mostly, like I say, dirt roads that are not traveled as much, um. I'd love to get on some private property owners and stuff like that and get it off the roads, but. Um, my first initial connection would be using some of the roads, but. Hopefully in the future, maybe contact uh some private landlords, maybe get the road, the route off the road, but. Uh, for the first initial launch of it, we would use the routing that we have here.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair, um, just uh to add to the presentation, um. Council have already approved by bylaw the use of the existing roads networks that they are um that they're using. And it's very specific about which roads uh can be used for ATVs. Um, if council wants to, or if uh they, the request is to expand it. We would staff would need to bring a report back to council for you to consider to amend the bylaw to allow them to uh expand this route. Um, one of the considerations is that um the county council or the county roads are different. And so they would have to seek approval from county council in order to be able to utilize those roads. But I think they're probably county council will be saying, oh, we need to see the local routes first, so they would expect us to sort of. Say that we were prepared to prepare, uh to approve it prior to them approving anything on the county roads.
They, they always usually ask for a letter of endorsement from the township saying, yeah, the township is on your side, no problem. That they usually tend to follow suit, but depending on where the routing is.
Council.
Thank you, through you to the delegation, um, so looking at your, at your map. This is, the green is your new proposed.
Yes.
Uh, route. Where is your present existing route?
So all this is black, so if you look at this map currently here, you see all the black side on this left side, that is our current.
How do you get from Lisbon to Kelly over to Augusta right now?
So right now, like without this route, we don't, we don't currently get there unless you come down from north of um from Merrickville straight down. And that's, once you leave Merrickville, the south end of Merrickville, that's Johnstown's ATV club. And uh they take care of all of North Augusta in that end, so leading up to North Augusta Road, that's kind of where our line is. And they're, they're a different club after that.
Okay, as well as after, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm never very excited about ATVs in the road, because I've got more than going up and down my road than I do cows. And there's a lot of those. But the one road you have on here, I would suggest that is an actual no-go. No way is it safe to have ATVs on Lake Lloyd Road, especially crossing Mother Barns. That's a death trap in car. Let alone put an ATV with a car coming off Mother Barns and an ATV cross them
Yep.
on Lake Lloyd. That's just
The way we looked at it was where we are existing, coming off of our existing system. Where we come out of Plum Hollow, uh, Enchant Road, it's kinda, it worked. I'd like to use line nine and go up line nine straight across, but then we come out along the north, we could move the section of trail northern where it's across line nine and then work our way back down to Reading Road that way. Which is totally possible. I just kinda used whatever dirt roads I knew were kinda not working really well, like, doesn't have a lot of traffic on it. But I do agree with Lake Lloyd Road, it is quite a busy road. And I'd like to just come out of the chant concession and go straight across line nine if I could. But I, that just kinda worked that way for that per, that, that time, right? So if I do have to move it over, I have no problem with moving it. We're very flexible with the routing. We're just trying to get it better initially right now, so if there is concerns about moving it off that, I'm sure we can move it anywhere you want.
What about Champ, Mother Barn, and then you've just got a little, you've got the corner at Lake Lloyd and you're right onto Scott. And then you're not on, because you're at least turning off of Champ.
Yeah, like, so we, we didn't wanna use all of Champ Road because we wanted to utilize the open concession down through the Beaver Meadow was what we call it. We we let that little area, it's kind of a nice little spot to go for a ride down through there. And kind of why we wanted to do that. And we also, there's like the snowmobile trail crosses there as well, so we'd like to revamp that, maybe throw a culvert or a bridge in there and and, and make it more accessible, because right now it's kind of just a big water hole. So just to help them out with putting double funding in that area, usually helps their system as well as our system, right? So that's why we come out, and it's an open concession at the moment too, so no one's really using it. If we do use Champ Road, then you come down to Washburn and then move up, but, which is fine too. More one more thing too is, when we're not on roads and we use actual open concessions and stuff, we get more funding from OFATV. So when we're not on a road, like a dirt road, we, like, we get no funding at all for any dirt roads that we have, paved roads, that kind of thing. Over on private land, road railbed, stuff like that, we get funding from them to keep the upkeep of the trail. So when we're going through a section like that, like the Beaver Meadow, that would be trail, we would get funding for that.
Counselor, yes, sir.
Thank you. What kind of volume where you're talking, like, can we expect ATVs every weekend, or five days a week, or just Saturday, some days? Are you talking fifty, you're talking a hundred, or you're talking eight hundred?
Currently, our membership's only two hundred and fifty-three. That's just in the Toledo Smith Falls area, but we do see volume coming in from other areas of Ontario. It is a full federation, so it's all Ontario-wide for your trail pass. I, this section here, I probably wouldn't see crazy volumes throughout the week. You might see two to ten bikes a day at most. But I, I certainly don't know, because we don't have the route there, everybody goes up north and coming back around, so it'd be but on weekends, obviously, we'll see more traffic than we'll do definitely through the week. You can see up to maybe forty bikes on the weekend, depending that would be probably a high number. But I don't have exact numbers for you at the moment with volume-wise. But.
Follow-up, and I, I just don't know, are bikes, or motorbikes, or whatever you got here, the four wheeler, are they allowed on the road, like before six in the morning or after six at night, or?
We, we have a dawn to dusk thing with our club. Some clubs ride them right, right through, you can go anytime. We passed a bylaw with our club that we'd like to see dawn to dusk, so whenever the sun starts going down, head home. And then overnight, you don't use the trails. Especially just because it's hard to see at night, animals, that kind of thing, don't wanna cause any accidents, so it kinda saves a lot of headaches, that kind of way, but usually, yeah, so when the sun comes up, so summer, whatever time that is, the summertime's a little earlier, some heat, right, but and then thus we tend to shut them down, so. And now that is a bylaw, that is, you could be driving from Renfrew, when you drove down the area, they wouldn't know that, unless they better by law, so. Currently with OFATV, we do not have an actual ruling that says this is the exact time you have to ride it. Each club kind of has their own bylaw for that.
Through you, Chair, to the committee, I just wanted to let you know that on the webpage, it talks about bylaw. Excuse me, bylaw twenty-two sixty-nine, which permits and regulates off-road vehicles. And some of the rules are no riding thirty minutes before dusk or thirty minutes after sunrise. So that is a township rule, isn't it?
You go perfectly.
We have the mayor, has a question. You might have to hear, like, listen really quietly to the TV. He didn't hear you.
Sorry, there we go. But I'm, I'm unmuted now, can you hear me?
There I am.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just looking for confirmation. I believe that same bylaw from two thousand and twenty-two basically allows ATVs on the vast majority of our roads, there may be some exceptions that are, that are noted in there, so can we get staff to confirm that my understanding on that is correct? And if it is, then maybe to the presenters, what is the difference between us designating this particular route as part of your trail system? And you just using the roads under the existing bylaw that allows basically all of our roads to be used for, for ATV? So that's the, the two questions. Thanks.
The first question was about the time, or no, it was sorry, I missed the first one. I can do the back, the last, last one is about designing this. So this routing would go on what we call our OFATV app, which is called QuadOn. That allows all of Ontario to see where the routing goes. So if you're traveling from other places that are not in this vicinity, they'll know where they can go through the area. Now, if you're a local person and know that, okay, I'm in Kitlee and I know that they have an open bylaw, I can just use whatever side road I want. That person will obviously just use whatever routing he's gonna seem fit. But if you're traveling through, especially following the map, then this routing will be the most popular route that they'll take, right?
And so I'm assuming that your trail marshals would, to whatever extent they're active, they would be active along this designated route as well?
Correct, yes. Our trail, our trail wardens will be monitoring this system. They go through all our trails, these are being designated trail, they'll be using them. They, they, they won't be going through all the roads, they'll just be using this section of road that they would patrol.
Counselor Dan. W. Clark.
Sir, Chair threw you to the mayor. Under section two of that noted bylaw, it does state that the operation of ATV shall be permitted under the highways, under the jurisdiction of the township in accordance to the provisions of the bylaw. And then at the end, there is exceptions, which is not very long. It specific road, Oxford Avenue from County Road two to the end of Oxford Avenue is noted.
Okay, thank you. That's great, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Dan.
So did you go through this ride, you went through Toledo on Saturday morning?
Yes.
About thirteen?
I'm sorry?
How many was there? About thirteen?
Oh, we had about twenty bikes, I think.
About twenty?
Yeah.
I'd seen you go by. I was back in the field and I, I thought it was, it was nice to see, it was a nice day. They were spaced out good.
Yep.
Nobody was nobody was stunt driving.
No, no, and, and most of the drivers came from other areas, so they weren't they haven't driven these trails ever. We got lots of great reviews by them all, saying that the area was beautiful and they love being able to see such different terrains and that kind of thing throughout this area. Would like to come back and drive them again and support the local township, like the, the town, like Toledo gas station, she provided us with the food, so they went in there and I think she didn't have a sandwich left after we left there, so.
One of the things, though, that happens, and like, every year is you get some guys will get on the gas
Yep.
back down around the church, churches. And they're on their back two wheels. And they're passing each other on, on their back, like, doing wheelies, probably doing seventy miles an hour.
Yep.
Cars coming and it's, it's chaos when that happens.
Yeah.
I don't know how that can get it. That's what people don't like.
That's right, and, and as a club, we hate that. Because that's not what club riders and, and, and regular riders would be doing, like, especially if you're going out for a daily ride and you wanna go from here to there. You're not doing crazy stuff like, oh, I see a jump, I'm just gonna hit it at a hundred kilometers an hour. Like, they want, they're respectful, they take all their garbage home, they they drive the speed limits, they stay on the trail. We get a lot of, and ninety percent of the people that we see doing stuff like that are local guys that don't have trail passes that are just out there just bombing around back roads and stuff. I get them on my road all the time. And like, I'm just sitting there and I have my dogs and kids in the front yard, and you see six of them just zoom by at probably a hundred. And our road's sixty, and it's like and I'm, I've, I've literally walked out in front of them one time, and they all stopped, and I said, you guys know that there's kids on these roads and you're gonna hit one someday, just not even know it. You're just, you're not gonna have time to, to react, like, you need to slow down, especially on roads with, with housing and stuff like that, you can't have that. And as a club, we, we, we wanna make sure that everybody is safe when they're out there and they're not driving like crazy people. So why you see trail wardens out there, the only problem with, you know, us being trail wardens is we can't lay any kind of fines or anything like that, we have to use OPP with that. We usually ride along with a save team. Save team runs around. They usually pick areas and they'll go out and set up a spot and then have riders, when riders go through checking all their legality stuff and seatbelt, chin straps, that kind of thing.
That's with the OPP?
Yep. Yeah, and that usually happens a few times a year, so depending on they'll usually contact the club and say, hey, can we, you wanna go for a ride, we'll set up a spot and do an area here, do an area there, but they have full range to our whole trail network, so they go periodically through on their own anytime. So like this route here, they'll be able to know, okay, they'll see our map and say, okay, here's where we're gonna set up a spot and see how it goes. And if we have a problem spot, if we see, if we get like a lot of complaints coming in, say, hey, line three. We've got a lot of guys who are zipping up line three and they're driving us nuts, so we'll say to the cops, hey, this is a good spot to maybe set up, maybe catch some of these guys on the weekend and say, hey, lay some, lay some enforcement down so that they're not doing this kind of crazy stuff. Putting a bad name on ATVs, what we, we get it with snowmobiling and ATV, like, it's not driving on trail or driving erratically or driving stupid, like, we get a lot of that. Unfortunately, we can't police everything all the time, but we always try to make sure that we produce a safe area for people to ride. Produce that, hey, it's a safe thing to do, don't go out and go crazy. All right, thank you. Very family-oriented and sport, is what we try to make it.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so back to Counselor Reynolds, comment, concerned about the safety regards to Lake Lloyd Road. And we talked, suggestion was Kelly Line nine. So I look at Kelly Line nine
Yep.
up to, I don't pronounce the word properly. I call it Mova, Mova, Mova?
Mova.
Mova, uh, road. Then connect to the Elizabeth Town-Kitlee Town Line Road. And then from there to County Road seven, then you got a little, there's a little stretch on that County Road seven to Rock Springs, and then you can hit your trail again.
Another, another reason why we switched
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
was so that we didn't use any county roads, because
Oh, okay.
The only reason why we didn't wanna use county roads is because getting ahold of leasing Granville was getting to be very hard to do, get any kind of information back from them. We'd send a suggestion out or, or email out, and we wouldn't hear back from them for like six months. So it was like, okay, how do we get it through without using any county roads that we can actually get a route through? And then hopefully eventually not have to use any county roads, but they ended up, for this routing that we used Saturday, they ended up getting back to me pretty quickly, so maybe in the future now it'll be a lot easier, but that was one of our issues, that's why we ended up using the routing then.
Okay, the only, yeah, the only reason why I suggest that little section of seven is that I see you're gonna be trying to use County Road sixteen, that County Road fifteen to connect, right? By North Augusta, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you, yeah, that little spot from the Old Church Road that Landonon, yeah.
Yeah. So anyways, I have no issues with it, I'm just asking a question.
What else?
You want like a we're okay in essence, is that what you're looking for? Are you looking for anything? What's going on? I know that.
So what I was, I was told was I need to present it to you guys so that we can officially put it in the bylaw, as this is the routing we have through the township. And once you guys have said, yeah, okay, that's fine, then we can go to leasing Granville and say, we've got township okaying this as a future route. And then they can okay the sections that we need with them. If we do need to move it off Lake Lloyd and move it around a little bit, that's fine, and Andy will do that, and then once we get it finalized, then leasing Granville signs off on it, and we can make a natural.
Counselor Dan.
What Counselor Reynolds said about Lake Lloyd, I tend to agree because just the way the road's shouldered
Oh, yeah.
and how narrow it is, it's, it's it's hard for two vehicles to go by, like two three-quarter tons or a tractor and and people tend to drive about a hundred on there.
Oh, yes.
As it's paved.
There, yeah.
And I, I could see coming up onto a side-by-side and getting surprised by it. So.
Yeah, like using, like, sorry, using line nine would be more ideal to cross there instead of to use Lake Lloyd as a corridor, that would be more ideal. Just gotta find my spot here on that map. Sorry. So yeah, like, what I was, was intending to do was use Johnston Road. And then you guys have an open concession from Johnston Road down to Scott Road. The only issue with using that open concession is the far end of the open concession runs into someone's backyard. So I couldn't use that. I know the landowner that has the land on both sides of it, I used to work for the man. And it just wasn't feasible to, because that would be the ultimate route, like, you wouldn't have to use any main, you just go up and use the open concession, it's not open as a road, and off you go. But I can't get through that portion, that's why I had to come back down to Lake Lloyd and go up Scott, because I needed to get to rural road and back across that way, right? But if I just stay on line nine, shoot across all the way up until you get to Cole Road and come down to Reading, I can do that too, it doesn't bother me one bit.
Anyone else? All right, thanks so much, Mr. Hicks.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to staff reports, five, Public Works, Road and Waste Management, five point one, PW two-five dash three-eight, Earth. Yes, Mayor?
Sorry, just a little bit of a, of a video delay. I'm just wondering, are staff looking for any kind of a direction on, on bringing this back, rather than just leave it hanging as, as open-ended?
Can he follow you? I think, I think I heard that, so he's asking our staff looking for any direction with respect to this before it gets brought back. You could put a motion on the, on the floor now to get council's direction, or if you want, staff could bring a staff report back at some point with the recommendation on this route.
I'd say a staff report back from January.
I think once he has the route established, he could start to, well, he has a fair sort of that, but.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, can you say something to see if the volume's better?
Yeah, is that working any better?
No, no.
And is that any better? Testing one, two, three.
I don't know what's wrong with this.
Any better now?
Speaking of, they're working.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. You can't hear me at all?
Mister Mayor, if you wanna call my my uh number and we'll put you on speaker. Oh, uh call my work number. I'll adjust a bit. Uh it seems like he he is considering that one little change. So um. Until, I guess until he comes back and says this is our. This is our final uh route. Then we can say, you know, we can make our recommendation through the council for approval or.
Through your chair. Maybe I can uh suggest that staff work with him to come up with a final route and then we'll bring that in that report back so that. You have a some feedback from him. He's heard from you on some of the concerns you might have. Uh so if we work with them on a a final route, we can then bring that back. Um and allows us to sort of amend the uh existing bylaw, which gives the A T V uh club um specific. Specific permission to use specific roads. And so we can just add that to the bylaw. It'll allow us to sort of amend the bylaws as well.
We've already had our own staff request for a stop at other barns and. Request was put in, but I don't think it's.
Perhaps the CEO could call myself. So, you know what a tin can and string? I remember um when the original A T V trail that was was started. And uh. We ran into some some areas that are still a problem to this day. Um like County Road One. Where it hits street road. And so. If I remember correctly, the. The bylaw that was put out had a like a year um trial period. That was. What that we had, we worked with and then we made a few revisions and then we did, we passed the bylaw. And at that time, I think they skipped by street road. And they have another route to get over to County Road One. So I would recommend that if we do something, it's not permanent. Until we get some time uh under our belts is to see what the residents along that road come back with. Based based on complaint. There was there brat the CEO gone down there.
Okay, let's move on. Five point one, report P W dash twenty five dash thirty eight, R F Q number twenty five. Sorry, twenty twenty five dash O two, engineering design of Chan Road structure to be received. And that the committee will recommend that council or R F U number twenty twenty five O two for engineering design services. For the replacement of the Shant Road culvert to Greer Galloway for the total price of forty six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, including non-recoverable H S T. And that the committee of the whole recommended council authorize Mayor Clark to execute the necessary agreements. Can I get a second or? Does staff wanna add anything before we get anywhere?
Right correction to the and that we will recommend the forty six seven twenty excluding. Okay, so uh first question was staff recommended that the twenty twenty six. C A N P be updated immediately following the budgeting process. Given the camp and the O sim estimates are significantly impacted in budget decisions moving. Would staff consider updating the foundational documents for actual twenty twenty five results as reported in P W? Twenty twenty five dash thirty nine before moving forward with the twenty twenty six. Can we ask for clarification on the question?
He's right behind you. Sure, yeah, absolutely. What were you asking? Absolutely, sure.
Um here's my question. There's two reports here and the one identifies. Uh significant savings on replacing culverts on line nine during the year. And there was awesome budgets and estimates in your asset management plan. Not awesome, but capital budgets in a prior year. I'm assuming they're still in them. I didn't go and look at the current O sim and camp. But if they're still very high at the uh. Number quoted here, eight hundred and eighty two thousand. My question would be, if you're using that as a base to compare it to, you're comparing to a. Really overinflated base or what it should cost to replace the culvert on Chant Road. Because you, in the second report that you have today. It costs about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to replace a very similar culvert on line nine. So that should be a base that you're referencing to as opposed to an an outdated one. You have new actual information. To reference to and compare to rather than that outdated estimate. That's what that question was. It's terribly worded, but that's what I was getting at there.
Uh okay, so the the O sim report was done in twenty twenty three and it's a class B high level estimate. For the replacement and it's a benchmark that we, uh for all intents purposes, we were very fortunate. Um with the Kitlee Line Nine, um while this, while the process didn't necessarily. We checked out all the correct boxes in the process, however, we did due to. The condition assessment that be notified of the the uh failure, I guess, of the crack. The engineer deemed it be unsafe and or low restricted. But then that sort of sped up process for us because we had to act on based off the engineering recommendation. We were extremely fortunate in the sense that we had a very, very dry summer, so we saved inward between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars for de-watering costs. Um that was a big saving. Uh we also managed the project in very good. Um and we were very, also very, very fortunate that. The contractor that we picked up the phone with to help us out when the bridge started to degrade at a faster rate and was. They ain't controlling and said it's a very good crew and they did a fantastic job and we're in there for a week. However, we don't know necessarily that we can, while it's a similar structure and shape aside. There are very great differences in the the topography. We don't know what the actual flows are for that. There's no data presently. So we need to check out the budgeting number, start with what the rep, the engineers have recommended through the O sim report. They they are currently working on the uh twenty twenty five um O sim report now. It'll hopefully be ready uh sometime in the new year. And we're done by annually or every every two years. The last one was twenty twenty three, this one's twenty twenty five, and we'll receive the report in the first quarter of. Twenty six and without a big cancel. And at that time, I'm gonna. Live with my colleagues, I guess, to discuss the fact that we would up update our asset management plan with those numbers. Um that will provide, uh just like the road green study. It gives us benchmarks or they've made recommendations on the cost to upgrade and complete the pairs to gravel roads, circuit roads, paved roads. We use those as starting places and if we do get lucky, you know, start a line, you're able to do it all, you know, it can be a much cheaper per rate. That's what we do. However, I don't wanna have to sit here and say, I told you one seventy, it's gonna be sick day. So I would much rather plan for the worst and hope for the best and take it from there. And there will be a time, I'm certain, that I'm gonna say it's X number or a dollar and it's gonna come in over. And I'm prepared to have the conversation while I have you, but I'm not gonna set myself up to have that conversation for you.
Did council have any questions?
That's only one. Uh and I appreciate, thank you very much for sending the question that does help. Um. Okay, do you want to answer the question?
Uh I can.
Sure.
Or so. Given the chant road structures similar in capacity. Location and and road usage to Elizabeth Town Kitlee Line Nine culvert that was replaced in twenty twenty five. And the actual cost for that project was at a hundred seventy thousand dollars. At as of this moment. Uh significantly below preliminary estimates. And included engineering survey and other design costs. That staff can learn from. Would council consider using staff expertise? So uh staff. In the long run, implemented that project with local contractors. And they have a design that is almost equivalent. I should finish asking the question. Uh staff experience and expertise to design and plan the project. Contracting the implementation instead of outsourcing the engineering, surveying and project management. All those costs that you incurred last year, this is very similar project. Very similar capacity, that culvert up there, you go up and measure it. Very similar in order to what it was in in line nine. I'm familiar with, we lucked out with a drought this year. That has other benefits where you can just stop up the water in Beaver Meadow. For example, if we had a normal summer. So the de-watering and all those costs don't need to be considered. The township did an excellent job of. Minimal impact to the environment on line nine. So basically, just take that, take what staff learn. And do it again and save hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is my question.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that here. I wanna approach this one that is similar to the manter. So we broke it out. If we're breaking it out into pieces so that we can do the design using ourselves. And the intent or the reason for using the engineers is purely, well, not purely, is primarily one of the first reasons would be for the liability. Because we need to protect corporation and the residents that we serve and make sure that we're not uh. Put them into a position where we'd be accepting liability. Um for anything that happened now or for the foreseeable future or the next fifty years. Secondly, it's a different conservation authority, which I thought I had worked with. However, they will require that we complete the bathroom survey and show what the actual true um flows are. Similar to Kit uh Kitlee Line Nine, I would suspect that that bridge. Probably wasn't designed for any real flow metrics or or the M T O guidelines we discussed. In length for Kitlee Line Nine. Um so we'll have to make sure that we meet that ten year. Uh the penalty of intensity, make sure we're not causing any adverse effects to any other properties upstream or downstream. Now, count from Canada again, but similar to Kitlee Line Nine, uh I'd read you. Very thanks much for your support, but no thanks. We'll do what we want and that's your choice. Um but again, as I said earlier in the previous answer, the topography there is much different, so I don't think unless. We want to get into uh working on some private property in order to get it for the culvert, we'll have to along the stream. Realignment and why, because it's it's actually a narrow crossing and there is significant amount of water that has been done through there on the peak croakers. Uh primarily in the spring thaw and through the uh wet fall season. Well, I recommend that we actually take the same approach. I don't think we'll be able to get to uh. Uh like the four big culverts, however, I think we get similar to what we have on uh. Kitlee South End line with the half hour step over there, um which is low impact and. Being very very quickly and it may or may not be this six hundred eighty thousand, that's sort of. Again, high level lesson from the the engineer, the O sim report. And when it goes to open market, we're subject to whatever the contractor is at the time doing it and. Geopolitical factors and all of those other conditions that apply and character availability, I don't know, it's just.
That answered my question. Um I guess I had my two questions, so um. So I don't know if I can ask another question. It's just, again. I think it comes back to sustainable replacement of roads and culverts within township. Find out that current process, can the township investigate? Satisfying the needs of legislation. Uh using internal staff, experience and knowledge on low volume activities like this. It'll still be safer, more efficient and the amount of savings and funds over the years. Be put back into other roads projects. It's just not sustainable with all this. Uh all the surveys, all those requirements. This township cannot afford that, given the volume of our rural low volume roads. I I think that's what the core of my questions are.
Yeah, I was uh, do we have any idea on the Lynn Road project? I kinda forget exactly, um what was the final contract note on that road? And that's it, but we rock in rough figures. We do that in my book? I'm I'm just trying to compare it with the Chant Road um dollars and cents. That's why I'm asking that question. It was it around um a million? Or it was it under, like something in my. Eight hundred and twenty five dollars. So if you compare Lynn Valley Road, which is um. I would say one of the, one of the busier roads in the township with all the people that go from Lynn back and forth. To um Chant Road, which is. Like kind of a back country um. Low volume style road. And then you look at the amount of money that we're spending. Uh we're gonna be spending on Chant Road. It seems like it's um. Overblown and. I tend to agree with the questioning of, is there no way that we could take on? Responsibility with some sort of a uh a water study? And come up with our own sizing on culverts and then contract it out to. Say somebody like Tappaberry. We don't have the equipment to actually do the survey. No, I wa- I wasn't asking that. I was asking if if we could get a study. That through an engineering company that would um give us. It's called a hydrological study, right? Give us the information from that and then we pick true experience. The culvert sizing and then get uh local contractors to bid on. Rather than um. Go through all the uh. Partake of of trying to put all this money in the twenty twenty six budget towards a very low used road.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I guess, um, and the Public Works Manager talked about the liability and I think that's probably the concern that we have. Professional engineers have liability insurance, which is why, one of the reasons we're hiring them, so if there is a mistake, something goes wrong. They are the ones that are taking responsibility for the mistake that they made. You're putting that all on the staff. You're putting it on staff to design an engineer's. Culver, um, which they may have experienced it, but I think it's better if we're going with professional engineering firm who can actually. Um, put their liability insurance against what we, what they design.
Okay, follow up then, have we ever investigated whether, um, somebody like. Uh, a Tack of area has the capacity or the experience or the staff that could provide quotes or. Along those lines for the culverts.
You might care for you to answer that, or you're asking if Tack of area has the capacity to do a design for a bridge, right? I don't believe in you, but I can check that for sure. I understand the permitting process, but I don't have to go through the conversation for a survey process, we have. I don't know, studies, that much survey. And the, uh, the assessment based on the. Great, that the, uh, edge of the guideline. That sort of dictate the size of your. Structure.
Compare that to the sixth concession. And what's, you know, all these projects that need money. I think that there are higher priority projects out there. Um, we're trying to just. Take the chant road project and minimize it because it's a low volume road. And and by minimizing it, reduce the amount of money. So that we do have money for, like, we have a thousand things we can spend money on. It seems chant road isn't quite as big a bigger priority as maybe some under there is are. Thank you.
Mayor Burrow, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me through the phone?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, so, uh, I have two, two points, one is a question for you and Chair to our Public Works Manager. Uh, to confirm that the, the hundred and seventy thousand dollar figure that we're using for the Kitley Line Nine comparison. Uh, correct when I'm wrong, that did include the same type of first steps that you're talking about doing now for the, the. Uh, what we budgeted fifty thousand for in terms of the engineering design, permitting, tender preparation, that type of thing. That hundred and seventy thousand did include all of that. The savings ultimately came from, uh, changing the, the design and we landed at a point where. We're gonna have sufficient flow that Rita Valley will not require us to take on full liability. Am I correct in my understanding of all of that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you are.
Okay, so, um, so now I'm gonna be very frank with my, uh, with my following comments. I think what council is seeing here is exactly what council deserves and I'm gonna talk about a few recent examples. So, uh, it, it wasn't days, uh, after the, the wall had been cast on the Lynn Valley Road Bridge and it was wavy. That we were holding our staff's feet to the fire, asking them why they weren't there, uh, supervising that job more effectively to prevent that from happening. Were they holding the engineer's feet to the fire and that type of thing? And then when we got the actual engineers responsible for that project in the room, we treated those engineers with kick gloves. Uh, just recently, we, we were one step away from accusing staff collectively of rigging a tendering process. To generate an outcome that they wanted. With those types of accusations that this council has been, uh, throwing, uh, in, in staff's direction. I don't think it's any wonder that staff is gonna be cautious and start off with the worst case scenario. And instead, I think we should be, uh, having faith in staff that if they can take the six hundred and eighty thousand dollar project and bring it in for two hundred and fifty grand. They will, they've demonstrated that rather than, than continuously. Putting our staff under the microscope, why don't you start recognizing the things that they've actually done well and let them do them well? And maybe we'll start getting better outcomes in these reports rather than, than having to, to go down this type of, of discussion. I really think that we need to start off with the engineer in, in the first steps, get all of the, uh, engineered information that we need. And then let staff do what they can to come in under budget. If we continue to use debt as a way of financing these large ticket items. The actual impact to the budget becomes negligible in any given year in terms of the difference. So we don't have to budget six hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the levy for this, uh, for this particular project. We can budget the repayment of a, of a debt over a ten year period. And then when we find that the actual project is only two hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand. We can either then just finance it out of the levy or finance it out of a reserve or finance it over a much shorter period of time, there's, there's so much flexibility. In using that approach. But I think quite frankly, uh, I don't blame staff one bit for wanting to, uh, plan for the worst and execute the best. And I'll leave my comments at that, thank you.
And I was just saying that, uh, giving a seven hundred thousand to that bridge with the engine with all of these. Guarantees that we're not the liability one, it's still only fourteen thousand dollars. Over the lifetime, a year, over the lifetime of the bridge for the people that live on that road and use that. You can't think of. The total cost of a bridge or of a road as something that's just one year. It's the life of whatever it is. And Mary's right. You, you always plan for the worst and hope for the best. And that's what everybody ended up with are unknown, so. I would suggest that we will probably end up with that on chant road, but you need to think about it as a fifty year. Of a lifespan and you're spending fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars a year to cover that. And that's at seven hundred thousand, that's around enough. Counselor's law.
Through you, Chair to Public Works, so. I'm sure we, we all understand that there are certain studies that need to be done. Is this a bridge that needs to be done for next year? Or, or can we just do the studies and plan accordingly?
Now, I agree to, now, first, next. In terms of, well, I've had studies already done, unfortunately. Running three bridge thousands, lots of road protection operations, uh, this is something that. Completely still not to get ready to get forward studies. I'm hoping that we can get the studies done within three or four months of the starting year. I don't know if we can have. It really depends on how fast we can, we can take itself around the life of working. Um, the intent would be yes, I would like to, however, at this juncture, I can't admit whether it will be. It may be a twenty seven project, but I have to through the process because. What isn't the same in this particular state as Kitley Line Nine. It wasn't flagged and wasn't low rated by engineer, so that triggered emergency response. So in this way, it would be a very similar process to what you guys said, maybe remember, uh, the Lynn Valley Street Bridge. But we'll have to do the public consultation that, that, or M C E A process. That'll have to, that will, that adds to the project fact, finally, so we. We might be able to get it done and ready to contract it for July, but it, it'd be.
Just gotta answer, Rob, clarify. Not an emergency for this year.
Crucial, thanks for twenty twenty six.
Back to that, sorry. Yes, it's, I'm. I recommend you do it now, there is in really, really bad shape, I'm still waiting on the Denver for the draft, uh, Oakston Report. The curve is falling off, the, there's this heavy erosion behind the walls, there's severe cracking. Uh, once they get the draft report, it's probably going to, um, highlight the.
And then I'll go through your former, um, predecessor. Um, we had other studies already completed for some other bridge work, so this one was not in that pile.
That we're even shared as well, actually, this was found in twenty twenty four, this bridge wasn't in the inventory, so there hadn't been any study or work done to it.
All of a sudden. Thank you.
Yeah, um. I guess, I guess the, the bottom line is, is that, um. We, when we think about debt, we have to think about, um, I think, future councils and if we. If we, um, are careful with that. We could tie the hands of future councils and, um. That's why I, I, I think the approach to try and get capital projects. As cheap as possible ahead of time by looking at alternative ways, um. I, I'm not saying anything about, uh. How our staff is presenting this, I'm just saying that, um. Thinking outside the box possibly, trying to find different ways to do business. And, and hopefully in the long run. Uh, reduce the amount of debt to the township residents. And leave future councils with, uh, some room for that. Thank you.
All right, so staff has, uh, given us option one as the recommendation toward the R F D G Galloway. As it complies with the municipal, the municipality's procurement policy allows the project to continue on schedule, are we all?
Just like, just, just a question before you go to call. So that through you to Public Works, that's all, that's including all study? Or just the, just the design of the bridge was forty six thousand seven twenty four?
Fairly, thanks for that, no, this is just for me designing workshops, we decided, as we discussed earlier, try and save money. I'll be looking after the consultable assist with recurring geotechnical engineering, topographical, academic, hydraulic, hydrologic, um, study. And normally in some places they run them all together, however, there's usually a fifteen, twenty percent markup on the side of consulting, so. If I do it, he's gonna play, you won't be taking.
All those grabbing the recommendation. In the quotes. He's carried. All right, moving on to five point two, P W two five thirty nine, twenty twenty five capital recap. The recommendation is that report P W two five three nine, twenty twenty five infrastructure capital project will be received for information. Can I get that mover and sub give the left please? Counselor, right? Anyone have any questions, please, someone's comments. Okay. All, all those in favor? And the polls. That function is carried in. Moving on to corporate services, administration, finance and governance, five point three. A twenty five dash seventy three and draft cemetery bylaw be received and that the committee recommend the council's approved. Council approves bylaw twenty five seventy three being a bylaw to establish the maintenance, management, regulation and control cemeteries in the town of Elizabeth Town Kitley. And repeal the bylaw number fifteen dash fifty in its entirety, can I get a mover and sub? And Mayor Burrow. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, thank you, Chair, I, I just wanted to let the committee know that staff have been continuing to work on that draft that was presented to you. Some formatting revisions have been made, uh, in addition to five separate revisions of the wording. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, on page two. Uh, what you would see as point number one under the third section, it's actually now become three point eight, just to, we continue with the formatting. Near the bottom, um, I put a period after all times maintained in the cemetery, cemetery. And then switch the wording to this includes those employed by others and all contractors will be subject to the direction of the supervisor. On the same page. Uh, point three has now become point C and I revise the wording completely to read. When assigned, specific tasks and responsibilities will be dealt delegated by the supervisor and those individuals will have exclusive right and obligations to cemetery services. Under the authority of the supervisor. Uh, the fourth change was directly under, it's now, um. So that would be point four is now point D. And it reads, uh, the supervisor is hereby appointed as a municipal bylaw enforcement officer for the sole purpose of enforcing the provisions of this bylaw. Any person acting contrary to the provisions of the bylaw may be ordered by the supervisor to leave the cemetery immediately and make payment for damages caused or created by their action. Uh, another change was on the following page, number three. Uh, you would see it as point nine, it's become point I. Uh, the wording has changed to read, except for the Green Bank Cemetery, no cemetery under the care of the township has roadways. Therefore, no vehicles, including cars, trucks, motorcycles, snowmobile or other recreational vehicles shall be permitted in the cemetery. Exceptions will be granted on occasion for contractors' equipment required for the opening and closing of graves and or maintenance to grounds of headstone. A notification must be given to the supervisor before work is carried out and permission is granted. And then the final wording word revision is on the fourth page. Item B under five, uh, the wording has been changed to no interimant will be permitted unless sufficient space to accommodate is available in the lot. Uh, staff want to acknowledge that Green Bank and near cemeteries were included in this draft of the bylaw. As we anticipate ownership transfer to the township, uh, will be completed by the time the new bylaw is approved by the registrar. Um, and therefore the bylaw comes into place if council chooses to approve it. Uh, staff also wanted to note that there are specifications through, um, the registrar and the Breaveman Association of Ontario. So if the committee makes a recommendation to approve the bylaw. And it's approved by council on December eighth. Staff will then have to post a notice at the entrance of the cemeteries. Uh, and have them posted for four weeks. So, uh, with the passing on the eighth, that means that it could be done by no later than the twelfth. Which four weeks would take us to January second, the day after the Christmas check, check down. In addition, uh, newspaper ad must run at least once. Then after the four weeks have passed, staff will have to prepare a submission. Um, to go to the registrar for approval. Uh, that has to include, uh, the pictures of the notices, the copy of the newspaper ad, in addition, we have to send it to all the monument providers. That have, uh, opt, have installed monuments in any of our cemeteries in last year as notification that. Uh, the bylaw is being proposed to be changed, plus anybody that comes and asks for it, we have to allow them the draft that was approved by council. And then once it's submitted, uh, staff would like to acknowledge that they have no idea how long it will take to get a response from the registrar, whether it's approved or not was. And that's all I have to add.
I mean, I, I really don't wanna be an impediment, but that was too many changes for me to absorb in your presentation there that I didn't have in with me to read over the weekend. The changes here.
Oh, the five changes, fair enough.
The five changes and, and. So I struggle with that. The guys have more questions from what I, information I have already. Again, um. My ultimate goal is that this process goes forward with the other cemetery too, but there is a little difference, uh. I'd say lead you management policy from, uh, the cemetery that I'm used to working with and what you're proposing here. I understand that we really want. I understand that we really want people to be reverent and careful and, and in a graveyard and to, uh, we, yeah, respectful. But when, when we sell a lot, we believe that those people are property owners. They own that lot, they own that piece of land. And, and here, I think you're just selling their right for internment. You know, this quite, to me, there's a little different philosophy than what I've been used to. In our management, we allow people to put flowers on graves though. And, and here you're picking them off, like how quick, do you think you're picking them off a, a week, two days, or a month? And, and I, I worry about that, like, um, we really, like, I remember for forty years, fifty years ago, my dad came home and I was, we just started calling. Things were tight, but dad come into house that he bought a new piece of land. Oh my word, I said, what happened? Well, the joke was he bought two, uh, he bought some plots. And, and he bought land, he didn't buy right. And I'm just saying out of experience, he didn't buy right for internment. And the management of people of the library really believe that people bought the property. So that, that, you understand what I'm saying, that's a different philosophy, well, what the article saying when you're selling internment rights? And I, I, uh, so I, I struggle with, um, the restrictions that people might have with, 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 with the county. Here and, and you say somewhere there are no dogs, um, I understand, I, I don't want to see a dog do anything in a graveyard, relieve themselves type of thing, I really want that not. But there are people with dogs. I mean, at the funeral, it's, it's a funny world, people bring their dog with them to funeral. Are we gonna, do not allow them at the gate? I, I just wonder. I, I understand we don't want wild dogs walking five days a week on their own through it, but at funeral, that's my question there.
Uh, through you Chair, uh, to Councilor Easterhoff. Uh, I do apologize for not having this ahead of you. If the corrections and questions on the meaning of the wording was brought to my attention this morning when I arrived, so I didn't have time to circulate it. Uh, the question in regards to the difference in the philosophy. It is my understanding from the course that this council paid for me to take this year on cemetery operating. It is the insurance rate, the property owned by the cemetery operator. So this is very similar to the previous bylaw that's currently in state. Plus it's very similar to the other municipal and cemetery bylaws, uh, that staff looked into to get, um, suggestions in regards to flowers. It was not the intention of staff to say that flowers are not permitted. The issue is that people have been planting shrubs, trees, flowers, uh, putting metal, uh, staffs, ornaments, and it's getting out of hand. Staff do not have the time to go and walk the, the, the list of ten cemeteries on a daily basis. Um, and it's becoming difficult for lawn maintenance care to maneuver around them and maintain the cemetery grass cutting appropriately. In addition, this council has had to spend money on maintenance to have contractors come and remove shrubs that have been planted previously and have overgrown and covered various tombstones. So that is a purpose for including that. Unfortunately, um, if you don't specify what is and isn't permitted, people are going to do what they want to do and just make this township's job harder to maintain the care of the cemetery. And sorry, there was a last thing that you said and I, I lost it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, the dog running free.
Oh, sorry, uh, when staff did a springtime and the fall, there is a cemetery that was visited that had a large dog running at large, who jumped on me, who barked at me, uh, so if it did this to me, myself, and it's going to do it to other visitors. Some municipalities and cemeteries have that dogs can be unleashed and be cleaned out. I mean, with their direction to staff, that's can be changed, but that is the purpose of why that was put in there. Because an issue was seen.
Through Chair to Deputy Clerk, so, um, may I add, did, did you, did you get any other, um, cemetery bylaws or municipalities to compare? Or is this something you put together yourself through the education that you have received?
It was, uh, sorry, through you Chair to Councilor Smith, uh, it was a combination. Um, I use the, the current bylaw, the education as well as the BA, the BAO. Yeah, the BAO has sample and then I googled, uh, in the region, various municipalities that have their cemetery bylaw available online.
I don't disagree with the planting of, um, of a tree. Uh, if you've noticed the cemetery next to us, uh, they're having trees and, and shrubs planted around tombstones and then all of a sudden it gets out of hand. And that's where staff has to go in and, and remove or trim or cut or whatever. Should really be the individual's family, but they, not only family members around the area. Some cemetery, for example, only, uh, do not, some cemeteries do not accept, uh, plastic flowers. That's another thing that, you know, you can also think about. And, um, my other question will be regards to the, um, cost. Is this a similar, um, fee structure, uh, to, uh, other cemetery boards in the cemetery?
Uh, through you Chair, uh, to Councilor Smith. The cost that is listed in this bylaw is what council approved previously. Uh, but it needs to be approved in the bylaw with the registrar, so it hasn't been used in regards to, um, comparable to other municipalities. I didn't do a recent cost, but when I previously did it, we're significantly lower.
And that follow up, that is the reason why I raised that concern, because this, in my opinion, is too low. Um, especially when, uh, you know, you, you as a municipality, you're going to start maintaining the cemetery. So the funeral homes will, will hire or you're going to hire a, uh, a, um, a grave digger. And, uh, there, there's costs to that and, uh, in my opinion, there's not enough cost to recover in what you have proposed. So, um, I, I'm not sure if this is, if this is when you want to really explore, um, increasing the, the cost? Or do you want to come back with your, with your revision, um, with what you brought forward for tonight? But, uh, I, I would suggest, uh, probably another three hundred dollars at least on top of that.
After you Chair, to Councilor Smith, I completely agree. It was on the list of things, especially with the new, if the cemetery board is, that was one of the things that wanted to be brought forth, was to increase it.
Okay, thank you.
I would support increasing the even of a flat rate of power. Lot of lots now are used for multiple, uh, internments now with, uh, cremation. So it's, it's not like it's putting it out of the price of, of a lot of people, it, it's just, uh, I think a thousand dollar would be reasonable. I have a couple other questions. Um, you have a measure there of standard block for a Lehigh Cemetery? Um, because that's the only place you're selling lots. And you've looked at the fact that process has started, then we may, uh, be taken on Green Bank. Green Bank has a different sized block. So, uh, the ones it's all surveyed out. So, um, for a lot, I think we're aware of that. I think that lots were the page one of nine or.
Oh yeah, on the bottom of, sorry, through you Chair, Councilor. Uh, yes, I do see that on page one, uh, that was taken from the current, I added in that represents the size maybe so that we can hide. There could be, uh, changes made, um, I don't know if you guys, it really is the direction of the council, whether or not you want it worded right into the bylaw or if you want it under the scheduled fee, which is the certificate interim that, um, when you're purchasing the lot and it states state with cemetery, uh, it says there is an area for the number of spaces in the area fee, we could manipulate this or make amendments so that depending on whether or not they're purchasing in Lehigh or in Green Bank.
Yeah.
Because if you already have it, if it's already laid out to a certain size, we're not going to make the move.
No, as long as we're aware of that and that's, we got some flexibility of a, of a difference.
Well, that was a good question because when I was trying to incorporate both here and Green Bank, I didn't think of the fact of the sizing. So, thank you for bringing it.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I guess I bear some responsibility for the allowance, and it's that the Deputy Clerk has brought forward, uh, spent some time over the weekend looking at this and provided her with, uh, some feedback. So along with some of the things that are discussed tonight, mechanically, uh, all we're going to do is make recommendations tonight. Uh, we would see a revisions such as the ones that the Deputy Clerk has verbalized and the ones that we're suggesting now, those will all come forward, uh, for the, the actual council approval. Um, so I think the mechanics around that can really steer it forward. I'll just, uh, a clarification through you, Madam Chair, uh, to, to those who suggested the, the thousand dollars and, and, and I'm supportive of that. Would the intent be that the, that, that the full amount of the difference between the current fee schedule and that, that total of, of thousand? Am I correct in, in thinking that that would go towards the perpetual care and maintenance? And the reason that I ask that is because that has a, you know, depending on how we divvy up that difference, it has a significant impact on the sustainability of the, the maintenance and, and that type of thing going, going forward. So in my own mind, I made that translation. Just want to hear from, uh, from the other members who have sort of, uh, already initiated that. Am I taking along the right lines and in your mind?
Thank you Chair, through you to the mayor, uh, the problems actually dictate the percentage. And unfortunately, uh, it's not in my mind at the moment and I apologize. So when I could bring a report back as I have done with other bylaws to show the changes that I've made and include, uh, option A and op, option B, where if you look on page six of what was provided, it will show you the land cost and the perpetual care. So I can do that so that there is, for the, do the breakdown for you for the total of one thousand so that you can see exactly what would be in the perpetual care maintenance.
Okay, thanks. I would certainly find that helpful, uh, and just before I, I sign off, uh, you know, this particular topic, um, there was mention of, uh, around the concern of, of dogs and so on and their behavior and that some other, uh, cemeteries say that they have to be unleashed and, and cleaned up. My inclination would be to, to allow, uh, dogs, but, but under controlled circumstances, so it must be unleashed, you have to clean up after them, that type of thing. I would, you know, as a former dog owner, owner myself, I would not want to be restricted from, you know, uh, visiting somebody in a, in a graveyard and, and paying my respects. Especially if the dog had been, you know, a significant part of, of their life, uh, I would want the, the, the ability to have the dog there. So I think there's sort of a reasonable middle ground there. I'm hoping to find a bit of support around the table to, to make a little tweak to allow dogs, but on leash and, and, you know, they have to be cleaned up after. Thank you.
Everybody okay with that? Don't have a problem with, with, uh, that part?
Yep.
Anywhere? Yeah, there's, there's.
If the full, full bylaw, how long is that taking to get here?
Well, next week, but. Five point four, road allowance request. Regards, that report A dash twenty-five dash seventy-four route, road allowance request be received and that the committee recommend for the access request and direct staff to prepare the appropriate bylaw and agreement. Can I have a mover and second for that? So we know, Mayor Burrow, does anybody have staff on anymore to add?
Uh, Chair, no, I'm prepared to answer questions. It's very similar to, uh, former requests from twenty eighteen. I have no other part.
And then we have any further questions? So all those in favor? Next is delegation of lame duck. That report A dash twenty-five dash seventy-five delegation of certain authorities for lame duck be received? And that the committee recommend council direct staff to prepare bylaw to delegate certain powers during lame duck period for consideration of future council meeting. Can I move one second for that please? Councilor Smith, Councilor Easterhoff. Does anybody have any questions? Staff will make the, uh, not this time, tickety-boo, all of them here is carrying. Five point six is the, the report A dash twenty-five dash seventy-six multi-year accessibility plan from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty be received and that the committee recommend that council approve that of twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty multi-year accessibility plan, including the attached policies and accessibility guide. Break and Councilor, no, does any, do you guys staff have any more for?
Yes, Chair. Uh, thank you Chair, through you to the committee, uh, staff would like to emphasize that accessibility requirements are mandatory under curtain, under various current, like, current legislation, therefore the township needs to continue its commitment to accessibility and providing excellent service to both the public and employees by implementing procedures and policies that are efficient, effective, responsive, and accessible. Accessibility meets people's needs and protects the dignity and independence of people's disability. When services are accessible, people can easily navigate into and around buildings, receive information, communication, and services in a format that meets their needs. As noted in the report, excessively services, accessible services are not just those, are not just for those with identified disabilities. Accessibility is important and crucial for inclusiveness, inclusiveness, I apologize, and simply it benefits everyone. Accessibility is important and sorry, staff are recommending council approves the twenty twenty-five guide to accessible documents that is included in this multiple year accessible plan, which is the biggest change from the previous plans presented to council. The guide was originally circulated internally several years ago, but was never adopted as policy and then, and therefore never became standard practice. Staff would like to know that by establishing standards and creating accessible documents, from the start, the township will ensure that the documents can be assessed and read by as many people as possible. Council has an opportunity to get ahead of the curve by incorporating these guidelines into their multi-plan, multi-year plan. This would allow our documents, online posts, advertisements, internal correspondence, and much more to be accessible to the largest group of people possible. By creating an exclusive, inclusive environment with as much accessibility as possible, the township is opening doors for a larger spectrum of people to consider running for council, sitting on boards or committees, volunteering, or working with or for the township. Most importantly, it increased the numbers of persons who can access our services, programs, and our buildings and provide more opportunities to participate in everyday life in the local township. And provide more opportunities to participate in everyday life in the local township. Does anybody have any questions?
Through you Chair, if you have any questions, so, um, I'm reading your list of, of twelve. Other four, couple, and, uh, asking the question. So one number five says buy accessible goods, services and facilities. So are, are you going to, um, provide that in the asset management plan of? How much money we're gonna spend, what we're gonna spend on, uh, since the, our, um. Time frame here in twenty twenty five, twenty thirty, five year plan. Same with, uh, accessible transportation services. I'm not sure what that was all about, for free, accessible public spaces. There's, there is going to be costs, uh, involved with this within the next five years. I'm just trying to figure out. If that's how we're going to plan it.
Uh, yes, through to, uh, the Council Smith, no, the Council, in direct answer to your question, Council Smith. Yes, the twenty twenty six budget and the capital asset plan will incorporate the physical requirements to all public facilities. Uh, to be combined by twenty thirty. The decision then would be for council from a budgetary perspective. Whether they would like to incur it all in one particular year or over the period of five years incrementally. But it will be included in the capital asset plan and it will also be part of the budgetary. Thank you.
When we were on our, uh, our tour of the township, um, the facility. Management pointed out, uh, the entrance to the library on twenty nine. I believe he mentioned something about the washroom here. Do we have any kind of, uh, an idea of where we stand with being accessible or? Some sort of a report card as to how we're doing with it?
Through you Chair, to Council Downey, excellent question. I, this, this, uh, responsibility, uh, came with this position. Uh, I'm just learning a little bit more to what is entailed and annually there are supposed, so this report. Uh, mentions the multi-year, so for every five years, the township has to have a multi-year plan. And then staff is supposed to bring a report annually, which will give council an update on what has been done and where we stand. So, I acknowledge that, that would be good for you to have and that that is a requirement. I would like to also acknowledge that at this time, they do not have that to provide to you. Looking back at former, uh, plans, uh. They seem to be the same thing every year, to be quite honest with you. Um, I can't find a copy of the report that would previously come to council. Uh, right now, my mission was to get this in front of council. Uh, because the previous multi-year accessibility plan was so important. So this is coming to the table late, with that I apologize. Uh, this is the month that every two years staff have to file with the province. That is next on my list to get that done before I go for the closure of the Christmas holidays. Um, and then, uh, it was my intention to work on preparing a anonymous survey. To put out for staff, council members, residents, those out in the public that won't necessarily live here but visit to get feedback. For staff to use to see where the area that are, uh, concerned to individuals that are using our services. And to go through, uh, what is the requirements versus where we're at, so that I can include that in the, in your report.
Thank you Chair, I have just a little bit. And so our, um, facilities manager, um, we also have our building inspectors. Uh, there are specific code requirements within interior building code around accessibility. They tend to be for new construction or major renovations, but I suspect what he's talking about is some of the facilities, some of the accessibility issues. He's looking at what the code requirements would be for a new building and making sure that we would try and meet those requirements. That's not to suggest that, um, you know, that, that the building code, anything, uh, Laura's plan is for us to make sure that we're.
We're also going for accessibility grants, I can get to.
Yes, there will be when something needs to be, I would call it, you know, grants to see a third. To see, to see what is out there, a possibility for funding grants.
Madam Chair, through, back to Council Smith, no, the Council, um, another initial question with this building from past experience. Um, the, the other thing you mentioned, which, um, I just want to give a response, uh, in, on the admin colleague as well. Yes, when you said I'm not sure what transportation services are, that would be applicable if the township provided a public transportation system. But, uh, although we don't, it is something that still has to be mindful if in that period of time down the road, council chooses to do so through a partnership. Or otherwise, you would have to have that service totally A O D A.
That's not saying you couldn't have on their website the number that they can call if they lived in the township. Yeah. There's gotta be something out there somewhere. Oh, like accessible, sorry, I'm here, Chair. Yeah, I, I don't know where we'd be and I don't know who we'd have a number, but there's gotta be something. And it mightn't be a bad thing, that's a good point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, item number twelve, uh, indicates, uh, the requirement to consult with the accessibility advisory committee. I don't believe, well, I know we don't currently have such a committee, I don't know that the township ever has, certainly not in the length of time that I was. Was sitting in the, in the chairs. So, uh, again, is that similar to the transportation where if you have such a committee, you need to consult with them? Or do we need to avail ourselves of, say, the county, uh, accessibility advisory committee to, to give us advice on things? Thank you.
Uh, through you Chair, an excellent question. Um, I'm not sure where he's reading point twelve. Cuz it could have been something that was copied and pasted there. Oh, page two, it, it's the counties, the counties does, uh.
The county does.
Yes.
But what the mayor is asking is that we as a municipality, we do not have an accessibility advisory. Accessible advisory committee. Um, as the county has that presently. Um, I would suggest that, uh, we go through our process and, and probably, uh, going forward for the, for the next term of council. Adding that as another committee to our committees, that would be my suggestion.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, my understanding is that it's a municipality with a population of ten thousand or more are required to have one. Just under that limit, we probably should start, well, you better move back to the general township.
Well, then that goes, uh, I would look at number four, training your staff and volunteers. Does that mean all of our committees? Each one of them has to have a, a training session?
Uh, through you Chair, I would, would recommend that, so that, um, as when we appointed the new committee. All of the members of that committee should have some of the R B training. That would be an additional. Learning session, can they do that? Would that be something they can do at home on computer today? I just, I just curious for that part, uh, through you Chair. Um, I'm trying to get all of you guys, um, set up so that you can do the training at home. Uh, I, I, I suspect that for committees, um, because we, um, have the limited license on the online system. That we would do just the one, the session with them at one time, um, do the training with them, uh, have them take a test that we've. You wanna change and do it all at once? I'm happy to arrange for something in the new year for, um. You, you probably wanna do two sessions. Um, there's, um, one course which is an hour long and then there are two courses which are about half hour. Um, it would be easier and, uh, we could then, I, I could give you a test at the end of it.
And you can give a test yet?
No. So you thought, no, you're not talking about the accessibility, you're talking about mobility. Uh, through you Chair, um, so the training that I'm trying to set up council with is accessibility and rights, um, which is. Um, so, I, you know, if, if you would prefer, and it would probably be a little bit easier, we can just, uh, do sessions in, in the year. Um, it, it's very interesting, uh, some of the, some of the courses, some of the training, it really sets up what. You as an employer, what your responsibilities are, both with respect to A O D A, but also, um, you know, uh, human rights. Hope it's safe, so that's what I'm hoping to be able to get, so, training.
Will the committee all need it once in the four years?
No, un- unless there was a substantive change in the legislation, I would suggest that probably once in a year.
Well, that's the back of the question I do recommend. We don't want, we could do the in-class section and in the new year.
Does anyone else have any more questions on? No, okay, oh, oh, all those in favor, so lame duck. That makes sense, multi-year accessibility plan one, sorry, I read, I read too far. All those in favor? Close, it scared me. Right moving on to correspondence, they are all to receive and file. Does anybody want any of those pulled out? Does anyone want to discuss any of those? And I get a moving stuff here to receive and file. Got, uh, Mayor Burrow and Council, pull those in favor. Carried informational items, does anyone have any? Mayor Burrow.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know that we had a, uh, food drive, uh, over the weekend. Uh, the second one, uh, this season, this one, uh, we held in Toledo, I just didn't know if, uh, any of our staff present. Happened to know, uh, the outcome of that, uh, how, how successful that was or, or not. We had any stats or, or info about that?
He's not crying, no. Next meeting.
Okay, at some point, it might be interesting to, to get some feedback on, on the two of those, even as, as an aggregate, um, to see how we made out it. I think there may be an opportunity, uh, I was there for a while, there may be an opportunity to, to, uh, do a better job of, of advertising. You know, sort of make this an annual thing, um, and hopefully see an, an increase of, of traffic. Um, while I was there, there were, there were a few monks and, and, uh, some people visiting, everybody seemed to be having a good time, but. I think there's an opportunity to, to turn that into something on an annual basis, so for now, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Support it.
Over the question period? Alright, adjournment.